Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As we begin this meeting, I would like to again welcome all those in attendance, and also those viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. For those of you that are here, I would ask that you join me in standing for a moment of silence, followed by the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll get us started on that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if we could have the roll call, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Warden Barahona.
Here.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. There will be one change under Old Business, Item 4B. Tom is not able to be with us today, so that will be postponed for at least another two weeks.
February 19th.
Yeah, so the next meeting on the 19th. Other than that, is there anything else that needs to, any want to add to this at all? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved?
Support.
All in favor? Our roll call, please, sorry.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. Moving on then to our public forum, I just want to read a little, a couple of comments here before we start, based on the changes we've made. "We welcome your comments and your opinions, and we ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Sheldon an even greater place for all citizens. I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones. If you think you have turned them off already, please double-check. You will have the opportunity to address the City Council under this public forum portion of the meeting, which will occur here shortly. When addressing the council, please wait to be recognized by the mayor, and then step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. Questions will be taken under advisement, and there will not be a back-and-forth discussion. You're asked to limit your remarks to no more than four minutes, and after making your comments, please be seated. I ask that everyone please observe, and I know that you will, the commonly-accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste." So at this time, are there any public comments that anyone would like to share? Okay, seeing no one. At this time, then, we will move into our presentation. I've got a couple of things I'd like to read, and then I have a presentation I'd like to make. The first is a letter from Potma Sigma Constructon, and it's signed by Dan Potma, dated January 21, 2020. "Bob Potma and all of the Potma Sigma employees would like to thank Dave Andriga for his genuine act of sincere kindness shown to Bob on January 18th. If it were not for Dave seeing and helping Bob by covering him and calling 911, Bob would not be here today. Thanks, Dave. You are a true hero. We appreciate what you did. Sincerely, Dan Potma and the Potma Sigma family." And then Dave, Dave is with us this morning, this afternoon. I do have a letter I would like to read for him as well. And this, this letter's from the city, and it's written to Dave. It says, "Dear Dave, in the early morning hours of Saturday, January 18, 2020, you were plowing snow on North Third Avenue, and you noticed Bob Potma laying in his parking lot. He had fallen and was unable to reach his phone, and it is believed he laid there for 90 minutes prior to your arrival. We appreciate your humility when you say you simply did what anyone else would do. However, the reality is, it was still quite dark at that time of day, and Mr. Potma had fallen some distance from the road. Your alertness and attention to detail saved his life. Thank you for your dedicated service to our community, and we appreciate you. If you would just come forward, please, I'll meet you at the podium there." All right, moving forward then to our consent agenda. Anything that you'd like to discuss separately, or also take approval of that, a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming today. Good to see you up in the round, Bob.
Slow me down a little.
Thank you.
Greg, you want to give that to Dave? Is that for Dave?
Okay.
That does go to Dave. Dave?
Dave.
This goes to you.
You also get that. That's a letter from Potma Sigma.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, then, moving on, Old Business. I do have a couple of proposals here, but before we get to that, we want to take, open the public hearing on the contract for deed for the former DJ's Redemption Center. Is there any comments that people would like to make in regards to that sale of property to the Lorenz family? Any comments from council?
I'll make the motion to close public hearing.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
We do have a resolution to approve the contract for deed with Ken and Janet. Take a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved. Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for your participation. We look forward to working with you, getting that property cleaned up. All right, then, moving on to Item 3, Subpoint 3, 3A there, 4A, excuse me. I have two bids here for the Sunset Motel and the 1021 Garfield Avenue properties. The first one is from Log Cabin Enterprises, Tim and Karen Potabom. I'll just read it here. "Please consider this our formal proposal for the above-referenced property located at 1401 South Second Avenue, Sheldon, Iowa. We offer a bid of $1 for the property. We ask that the City of Sheldon pay the survey costs and the closing costs. We also ask for the possible use of the fire hydrant if needed during the professional asbestos removal, and a possible permanent access off of Third Avenue South. We in turn begin, we in turn plan to begin clearing up the property as soon as weather and equipment become available in the spring of 2020. Everything on the property will be demolished, other than the house and small garage, or intend is to move the house to 1023 Garfield Avenue," which is part of Proposal Number Two, "and the small garage will be used to store equipment and tools when and if we redevelop the lot. All foundations will be removed and backfilled back to make it a safe place, safe and level lot. At present, we do not know what we will use the lot for. We may consider selling it at the completion of this project or construction storage units on the property. Either way, the ice ore will be gone." And that was, that's from the proposal that they had submitted back on December 3, 2019. So that's, nothing has changed in terms of that proposal. And then there is a note that both proposals are considered as one, Proposal One and Two, which I'll read here shortly. "Approval of the one proposal and rejection of the other will terminate both proposals." And then Proposal Number Two, "Please consider this, consider this our formal proposal for the above-referenced property located at 1023 Garfield Avenue. We offer a bid of $1 for the property. We ask the City of Sheldon to pay the survey costs and closing costs. We in turn plan to begin cleaning up the property as soon as weather and equipment become available. Everything will be demolished, as well as some tree removal, trimming, fencing removed, and junk hauled away. Our intent is to move the home from the Sunset Motel property to this location. We intend to have the basement dug and a home set as soon as time and labor allow in 2020. Our intent is to add a two-stall attached garage to the residence. The house will comply with the zoning setbacks of the City of Sheldon. We understand that moving this home from its current location, the motel property, to the proposed location on Garfield will need to be approved by the Board of Adjustments. We realize that acceptance of this proposal does not guarantee approval by the Board of Adjustments. Following completion of the inside and outside of this home, our intent is to put the property on the market as a single-family residence. This will add value to the existing neighborhood and taxable value to the city." And it's signed by Tim and Karen Potabom, as well as Mike and Sheila Potabom. So that is their proposal, and then I have another one here from Kerwin and Kathy Sturler. This is accompanied by a check of $1 for the property on 1023 Garfield, as well as a $5,000 check for the Sunset Plaza Motel property. And this is their offer to purchase. The undersigned Kerwin and Kathy Sturler buyers offered a purchase from the City of Sheldon owner, real estate known as the Sunset Motel at 1401 Second Avenue located in the City of Sheldon, County of O'Brien, State of Ohio, State of Iowa, excuse me. The purchase price offered is $5,000. The offer is conditional upon the following terms. Number one, Phase One, the buyers agree to have the house asbestos removed, repaired, and rented within 60 days from closing, or as weather permits. This will keep the tax value at this location, which is currently at $87,000. Phase Two, buyers will remove asbestos, demolish, and clean up the existing motel and garage. The old signage with posts will be removed, numerous trees will be removed, and the rest of the trees trimmed. The southeast garage will be left as a storage initially, as storage initially, it will then be repaired or removed. The lot will be backfilled to grade. This phase should be completed in less than five months. Our plan for the cleared area will be to expand our present rental business by the addition of up to six mobile homes. Along with this, we will, along with this will be new infrastructure for each unit. The infrastructure will be completed after Phase Two. With the addition of the homes on the property, the value should increase by approximately $150,000. We ask for priority consideration to purchase this property as we are a directly adjacent neighbor. Both the value and the future use of the property directly affect our adjacent property values and rentability. This offer supersedes all present offers from the above-said buyers." And that is, that was turned in today, as I understand, this morning, before the deadline at noon. So that's for the Sunset Motel property. This is for the 1023 Garfield property. The undersigned Kerwin and Kathy Sturler offered a purchase from the City of Sheldon, real estate at 1023 Garfield Avenue located in the City of Sheldon, County of O'Brien, State of Iowa. The purchase price offered is $1. The offer is conditional upon the following terms. Buyers will remove asbestos, demolish, and clean up the existing house within five months. We will remove and trim trees as required, weather permitting. The remaining work on property will begin as soon as possible, weather permitting and transfer of title. Our plan for the cleared area will be to move a house from outside of the city limits onto the property. This offer is valid only with the acceptance of our Sunset Motel offer. The Sunset Motel can be accepted, and the Garfield property can be rejected. The first offer stands alone. The second one is contingent on that first one being accepted. Those are the offers. Are there any questions at this time?
So my understanding is, as of this point, there is no, no actual stipulation inside of the agreements here of a defined timeline for removal and for completion of the various projects that are being proposed? Is that your understanding?
That's mine, yes. I'm not aware in the, that City hasn't put any kind of a timeframe on this at all.
So by way of example, when we were working on the Can Redemption Property, or the former Kinser and Kinser Property, after the council tentatively approved the buyer's offer, we were authorized then to negotiate, as Sam and myself and other city staff, to get some of those details worked out, and in that process, we proposed a timeframe to them, which they had an opportunity to review and ultimately accepted in that context. And that's what you proved earlier today, is the document that had those specific timelines in it.
So, Micah, you would say that with whichever potential buyer we go with, they would follow that same kind of chain where we would allow, it would be authorizing you to negotiate? Is that?
Yeah, what potentially can happen today is that you provide direction to city staff and myself on which concept, if you will, the city council desires to pursue, and there's details to be worked out within that. For instance, there were proposals that you heard from each submitter, or each bidder, about closing costs. Simply because it was proposed that way doesn't mean it necessarily would end up that way. Okay?
Sure.
But you would be giving direction today to which concept you want us to pursue.
Gotcha.
Would that be considered a negotiation phase, then?
Yeah, it would proceed as we did with this other property, is put the particulars in a proposed contract for deed. It would likely be some back and forth with the tentative buyer, and then ultimately, it is all subject to the statutory sale process. So a public hearing approved by final resolution, just as you have done with the other property today.
Okay.
Nothing final and binding can be put in place today.
The one thing that's a little bit different is that we have two people interested in this property, whereas with...
That is correct.
So...
Based on prior discussions, and based on what I understood Sam had outlined at the last meeting, is that this would be kind of the last and best. Direction would be given, with everybody understanding, including the tentative buyers, that technically, someone could come in at the last minute and offer you a million dollars, and you would say, "You know what? We think we better take that." That's, that's all a theory. But in theory, that could happen.
We could give them first right.
Yeah. I think both the Stirlers and the Potaboms understand, based on all the prior discussions and being involved in these type of things before, that it's all subject to final council approval. That's just how city property is disposed of.
So I guess at this time, I think we give direction, I think the first would be to review both of the offers, because we're just getting this, the first one, the Potabom, we've had that offer on the day, we've got this one from Stirlers now, which has changed slightly, I think, from previous, just to make, and then select who we think is going to be the best. I think we give, can we give you the authorization to do that, and then move forward with the other?
Well, I think...
Or does it have, do we have to...
What was contemplated, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what was contemplated is that the council would decide sooner than later which path to pursue. And if the council isn't prepared to do that today, that's your prerogative, but...
No, I mean, I think we've, we've drawn this out long enough. So I would make a motion that we proceed with the Sturler proposal on developing the land into future rental space, and then the adjoining contingent Garfield Avenue property.
Okay. Is there support for that motion?
I second that motion.
Further discussion?
Do we need to add to the motion that we're asking the city to, to negotiate a contract on that? Does that have to be added?
What's your current motion?
That we follow Stirlers. Except the Sturler proposal. Proposal is read.
What I'm hearing you say, Wayne, is that you're making a motion directing city staff and city attorney to...
Right.
...prepare a proposed contract for deed that incorporates the key terms of the Sturler offer, with it all being subject to public hearing and other required final approval.
Boy, you say it a lot better than I do.
Is that what you were saying?
That is exactly what I was saying, yes.
And you're, Sean, are you fine with, you seconded that motion as Micah restated it, you're fine with it?
That's how I heard it the first time.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'd tease my...
If not, roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Okay. And again, both, to both of you, thank you for your bids.
Thanks for your interest.
We appreciate that. Okay, let's move on then to Land Sales, New Business. Considered a wastewater treatment plant pay application number 20. Normally, we'd have that under the consent agenda, but I think, Todd, you wanted to give a little information on that, why it's here.
I don't know why it's on New Business, because that's what Sam put it in.
Okay.
It's a large pay request. It's $4.55, $3.63, and .99. It's retained, is essentially what it is. We have received all appropriate lien waivers for work done. We have one partial lien waiver yet, because we're withholding around $50,000 from Saniter yet, because they've got a little work to hammer out on some of our control things that aren't working right. And then the rest of that, balance and finish is $69,150. The rest of that 19 is for some seating work, which still needs to be completed this spring. But we are comfortable with releasing $4.55, $3.63, and .99.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Support.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, moving on then to Item B, approving a resolution setting the time and place of a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 maximum property tax dollars and approve hearing notice. We have that resolution in our packets. Need a motion to approve.
I'll put that motion out.
Support.
I would state the date.
February 19th.
Okay.
Motion to approve the February 19th council meeting as the time and place for public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 maximum property tax dollars conversation.
And I'll still support that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, then, we need to approve this resolution approving the drug and alcohol testing agreement with Sanford Health. That also is in your packets. Is this something new?
It's a, an agreement. The agreement is new, but it's nothing different than what they're already doing for us, but we have to approve it as part of the Nationwide Clearinghouse.
Okay.
Anything in particular that it wouldn't be a consent agenda item versus...
I think the reason it's here is because, per the city code, contracts are typically approved by a resolution.
Gotcha.
But it has been reviewed. There's been some back and forth with Sanford and their attorney, just to clear a few things up, and recommended that you approve it.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the drug and alcohol testing agreement with Sanford Health.
Right. I support that.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Item D, a resolution updating wages for full-time employees to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act, and to correct Resolution R19-4449 and R20-4480 regarding wage calculations. We had a discussion of that, I think, during our budget sessions.
Yeah.
There are three employees that need to have their wages updated, so we are in compliance. Take a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Support? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, moving on to Item 5E. The first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 122 entitled Iowa's Ride miscellaneous permits. There are a number of them listed in the packets, again.
Greg, I've been asked to just comment on that real quick.
Okay.
So yeah, what's in front of you is, you know, it's a pretty standard process, as we've had Rag Ride come through, I think, in 2004, and then we were passed through town, I think, in 2014, to establish an ordinance, which could be approved up to three readings. This would be the first reading tonight, which would essentially lay out the permitting process for food booths, et cetera. Pretty standard process for cities to go through. So that's what's laid out in front of you, and I know Sam Quaker and myself, along with the three chairs of the Iowa's Ride Committee, with Pete, I know sits on that, along with Heidi Brown and Chanelle Mattis. We all met, reviewed it, compared it to our ordinances from the past, and we feel comfortable with what's laid out in front of you. So you can, you can, you can go all three readings, or you can, you can expedite the process and consider waiving the second and third reading as well. So if any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right. Let's have a motion to approve first, and then we'll have discussion of questions if there are any.
I would...
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the Iowa Ride ordinances.
Support.
Okay, are there any questions for Kurt?
Kurt, any big changes from the times where Rag Ride's gone through, or anything like that, anything that really...
There may be some minor things, but it's pretty much the size.
Yeah.
Pretty much a template that we've used.
Some of the fees might have changed a couple of bucks.
Sure.
No further discussion, and make a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
All right.
I would move to expedite this and waive the second and third reading.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Any comments?
The only reason we want to do that is we have to get word out to the food booths and the people of charitable groups around town, and the sooner we can do that, the better.
Understood.
If we do three, two more readings, we're going to be pushing.
All right, any comments? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, moving on to Item F, the resignation of Heather Jacob. Tricia isn't.
I can answer questions. She's anticipating May 15.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make the motion to accept her resignation.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
I just want to publicly thank Heather for her part in getting the pavilion up and running. She's been with us from almost the beginning, if not the beginning, now. Okay? Just one comment, just for the public, out of her letter of resignation. My reason for leaving is not a dissatisfaction for any part of this job, but rather, my husband and I were moving to Kansas City for him to pursue his education in seminary. So, sorry to see her go, but we wish her the best. All right, next one is also a letter of resignation from Jet Corver. Need a motion to accept that resignation as well.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
I do have one question, and maybe Sam can answer this. Since we've been posting that opening, how long do we anticipate being down an officer and the chief?
Are you with us, Sam?
I am. Jerry?
Yep. Did you hear my question, Sam?
I sure did, yep. We, we have the chief of police interviews on February 22, and if all goes well, we can have approval of mayor's appointment at the March 4 council meeting, and then clearly the candidate would have to give notice of their current position. So it's probably will be April by the time we have the person in place. As far as the officer position, we have two candidates so far, perhaps the third for police officer that will be testing on February 21, which is the same day as the testing for the chief candidate. And Jeff Taylor, our chief of police consultant, will be testing them also at the same time. And we have, we may be able to move forward with an offer as soon as February 19 for one of those candidates. We're also anticipating a, I'm, I'm anticipating a retirement, so that, another retirement this year too. So, the other candidate, other candidates probably have a good chance as well for testing those, okay.
Okay.
Would that answer your question?
So it sounded to me as if the officer could be sometime in March.
Yeah.
Chief, April.
I would say April is pretty optimistic, in the sense that notices have to be given and moves have to be made potentially.
So you're saying it's more than just a standard two-week notice type scenario?
Well, when you're talking about moving from a supervisory position, if that's what you're currently in, and I have no idea if that would be applicable, but that could add to time. So, April would be great, but I just, I just want to be realistic.
Are you speaking to the chief position?
Chief position.
Or officer position? Officer position potentially could...
Yeah, that could be quicker.
Quicker. That's the one I was more interested in.
So, all right. We do have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, and again, too, for Jet, he served the city four years in his role as a police officer. He's going to be, become a deputy with O'Brian County. He will maintain his residence in Sheldon. And again, we're sorry to see him go, but we thank him for his service as well. All right, moving on then to the reports under 6A, report from the fire department. Brad, I understand you're going to take care of that?
Yes, yep, I will. Scott Monique was supposed to be here, but he's gotten delayed in Des Moines. So just a little bit of summary of last year for the fire department. We had 123 calls. Thirty-three of them were either fire alarms or sprinkler alarms, 14 fires, two rural fires, three good intent calls. I can remember one of those is we had to go shovel sidewalks for the ambulance so they could get to a house after a blizzard. We had a mutual aid eight times, two explosions. We went and sandbagged one afternoon. 16 car accidents. We assisted SCAT 40 times. We did one water rescue. We had one carbon dioxide alarm, two car fires. We had two EMS calls that there wasn't an ambulance in town. Kind of our average time from when we get paged until we leave the station is about three minutes. Average time from page till we're on scene is about six and a half minutes. Average call last year was about 32 minutes. Average, we had 16 firefighters show up for average on calls. In those 123 calls, we had 1,092 hours in man-hours. Our longest call was the explosion at Kent Feeds was a little over four and a half hours. The next one was the explosion at Ag Partners for three and a half hours. And then we had some mutual aid house fire over at Archer for a little over three hours. Just in-house training last year, the department members did 1,574 hours of training. That's just in the fire station. That does not include if they went to a class on a weekend or a night outside of Sheldon Fire Station. So if you would add that number, I think it would be tremendous. Right now, our firefighters, we tried to take firefighter one, which is over 200 hours. They just upped that from about 140, they added about 60 more hours, and that's all 100% volunteer time when they go take that class. It's more training than the EMTs take. So, that, last year, with our annual fundraiser we do once a year, we were able to purchase five handheld radios for just a little under $13,000. So that completes, partially, we're there replacing radios with more durable radios that are designed for fire service. So that's an ongoing project. We're up to 24 right now. We need about six more, and then that project will be done. Currently, we just started remodeling the wastewater plant, turning that into our training facility. So right now, we have, we're remodeling that painting, removing some stuff, so that's ongoing progress, and we'll report back as we get going there. Our current staffing right now is, we have 27 full-time firefighters, and we have four high school students that are on. And again, we're always looking for volunteers. We're always short during the day. So, so far this year, we're up to, I believe, 12 calls in the first month of the year. So, I think we're on pace to keep up with last year at the rate we're going. So, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
How's the new pumpers working out?
We've had it out several times, but we haven't had not to pump it at a fire yet. So, that's a good sign.
That's good, yes.
And if people out there may be watching or listening, how can they, if they're interested in volunteering, how can they get more involved?
There's an application online. Or contact one of the fire department members, and we can get you an application, so.
All right.
Brad, you had mentioned the range of training, or the, the training hours?
Yes.
I think a question was asked in regards to EMT, if there were a hierarchy, if you will, of opportunities. Do you have that same option or not?
In the fire service, there's firefighter one, then you also go to firefighter two, and then there's also driver-operator officer classes you can take as well, once you get the firefighter one class done. Those are shorter, so.
All right, we have, that's the end of the report, and there are no more questions. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We see that for information. Sam, do you have anything you would like to highlight in, as a city manager report, out of your city manager report?
I do not.
All right, then, moving on, staff comments, anything else you'd like to add, Todd?
Just one, tomorrow is going to be first review of street superintendent resumes. So hopefully Sam and I will be able to get together tomorrow and, and let the first review and then plan out the timeline as a good... As of today at 4:15, I came up here, I have five resumes.
Thank you. Kurt, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to just say thank you real quick to Tricia and the first staff of the pavilion. We, we had a team night on Saturday. I'm not sure if you guys... We had a team night at the pavilion on Saturday, the first time SDC hosted events, and we had over 160 kids participating, from junior highs to high school. It was a great event, and we ran around and our heads cut off, but it was a little bit different setting, particularly than us.
I think...
True. Video.
I know. You showed it before it happened.
I'd like to see what it looked like after it happened.
I'll show you this. Carla Pulcher, our candidate, was there.
She didn't quit, did she?
No. The next day, that there were over 160 teenagers in the building, and she put a little by the other room. She did a good job. It was fun.
Yeah, but it looked very interesting.
It's great. It's good to...
And how long you been in charge of that?
Put that down as training.
Is that all you, for you, Kurt?
Yes.
All right, anybody on my left, any comments from you? To my right?
Yeah, I'd just like to make note again that as, as we go from, you know, meeting to meeting, we see things come to light that really shows what a great community we have. And today, we got to honor someone who'd helped someone else out, another citizen out, and we talk about issues a lot at times that are, you know, financial in nature, or, are difficult at times, but I appreciate that we can take, even with the resignations and whatnot, so, just wanted to make that comment.
Very good. And a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Support? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Just for the record, it's a closed sub one, sub C.
Thank you.